All right, call to order the meeting for the revenue neutral rate hearing for USD 431. Everyone's present except Julie and Jesse is with us by phone. Okay, item three, public discussion.
Did you have any public discussion about the revenue neutral and budget?
I.
Or the revenue neutral particularly for this meeting?
Yes, yes, I do. I'd like to know why it's going up so much.
Okay, um, so, um, so as you can see here in our revenue neutral, and I'll just address this to everybody, the, the actual taxes levied for the general fund last year were eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. Estimated taxes levied for the general fund for this coming year are eight hundred and forty-three thousand one oh seven, so approximately fifty thousand less. Then, as we make our way through the, the other three major funds that we levy taxes against, they add up to, last year, we levied one million five hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and three dollars. This year, we're estimating to levy one million five hundred and seventy thousand fifty-two, which is approximately fifty thousand more in taxes levied. So, we're going from the actual tax rate of twenty-nine point five oh one in mils, we're actually going down to twenty-nine point five mils. So, so in, in all actuality, we decreased the number of taxes levied on the general side by fifty thousand, approximately fifty thousand, increased the amount of taxes levied in terms of the other three amounts by fifty thousand, but the mill rate actually went down by a thousandth of a point. Does that make sense?
So it evened itself out?
It ba- it balanced itself out. So in terms of, in terms of.
It went up, it just kind of went.
It kind of balanced out, but in turn, in, in, in the true, in the true issue of the law, we did exceed revenue neutral because we are levying fifty thousand more in taxes. That, because we look at both, we look at both the, we look at both the, the mill rate and the actual taxes levied.
So it went down by fifty, but it also came up fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and you're speaking about the general one right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and, and the, and the capital outlay, capital outlay increased about ninety thousand in taxes levied. Supplemental general fund, which is, which is our LOB, it went down by sixty-two thousand, and then bond and interest went up about twenty thousand, just under twenty thousand. Now, you're, you're reading the, the letter you got from the county.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
So, so what happens is I have to, I get the budget software ju- approximately July one. Then, but by July twentieth, I have to give estimates to the county of what we're going to do in terms of our taxes that are levied, in terms of our mill rates. And then, then as I continue to, to work through and get input on the budget, either from the board or from the state, state department, that's when, that's when we come up with these numbers that we published in the newspaper.
So, appraisals went up overall, so that's an increase in.
Correct.
Taxes right off the bat.
Correct, and we don't have anything to do with those.
Right, right, I understand it. But then exceeding the net new, uh, neutral rate, that increases it even further.
That would be correct.
What is the additional increase benefit to the taxpayer?
So the, so the, the main focus that we took this year was on our capital outlay. That was where we increased our mill levies the most. And that is so we can put money into not major building improvements, but building improvements that need to be made within the school, without, without having to wait for years and then pass a bond issue for a large.
Don't you currently have like two million dollars in capital outlays?
Correct, and that, we don't have two million, we have about one point three.
Okay.
And that, that is, that is our emergency fund. That if, you know, for, for some reason, our, let's say, the air conditioner chiller went out at the high school, it's gonna be about two hundred and fifty thousand just to pay for that. Or if we had a hailstorm, we have deductibles that we're going to have to pay for on our roofs.
Okay.
So that's, that's what that is for, and then the additional money that we levy will go towards projects that we need to do.
Okay, so no capital outlay projects. I mean, you're not, you're not planning on building anything new or?
No, we, we do need to replace the roof at Roosevelt, it's over fifteen years old.
Okay. All right, um, I really appreciate what all of you do, and I think you guys do a great job. I, do you have a plan on raising like the overall? Well, that's off, that's off topic for right now, so, okay. And, so right now, you're talking about the net revenue for all three projects, correct?
Correct.
The general, okay. All right.
Does that answer your questions?
It does, it does.
Okay, and I mean, just historically, looking at our code ninety-nine, we have, we have gone down on our mill rates. So we've not, we've not excessively tried to stay at the same mill rates, even though, you know, even though we've exceeded revenue neutral, we've exceeded the revenue neutral by the amount of taxes that are collected, not necessarily by the mill rate. So we've tried to de- so we've tried to decrease the mill rates as the assessed valuation has gone up.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I would suggest in the future, though, that maybe an article ahead of time, that, I mean, I realize I may want to hear it, but that maybe to help explain that.
Okay.
Would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
You know, just, things are tight for everybody right now, and I think everybody's watching the project, so.
Hundred percent, I understand that.
Thank you. Any other questions we can help you with?
No, I would like to see the overall, like, class grades go up, go.
Okay, yeah, that's a separate issue.
I, I understand.
Yes.
That's it for this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on specifically revenue neutral?
I move to approve to exceed revenue neutral rate as published in the Hoysington Dispatch. Do you know when it was published?
It was published August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth.
On August twenty-second and August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Yeah.
And we do need a roll call vote on this, so we need each person to say yes or no.
Okay. I will start. Yes. Neil?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yep.
Jesse?
Yes.
Okay. Passes six zero. So do I need to try to everybody on here?
Yeah, we'll write that on there and then have you guys sign it. Or we'll just ask them around and they'll all sign it.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay. Do we need to put my name on here? We can do the bond to the next one.
Yes, yeah. So we just need to adjourn that one time?
All right, I move to adjourn the meeting for the revenue neutral rate hearing.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
All right. I will call the budget hearing meeting to order. Roll call, Julie absent, Jesse by phone, everyone else is present. I believe you have it posted up there.
Yes, so while we've got this up here, I'll go ahead and just walk through the budget just a little bit, and then, and then we'll move over to the, to the needs assessment. You know, looking at the code ninety-nine, there are three years of historical information on the code ninety-nine. So, actual expenditures for the twenty-two, twenty-three, actual expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the proposed budgeted expenditures for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. You know, looking at that twenty-four, twenty-five, you see the budgeted expenditures, and then across to the left is the, is the actual budget line item, and then what that is. So, oh-six is the, is the general fund, and, and then it works across. So you'll see, so you see that we are, we are expecting, now, this is a budgeted amount, so you see that seven million one hundred and fifteen thousand as composed to, as opposed to seven million two hundred and fifty-three thousand. I will tell you that there are multiple factors that play into that general fund number. Number one being the student count on September twentieth, that's the number one thing. Number two is the audit that takes place somewhere between February and March, that they come in and they actually take a look at the actual numbers from our count day. So there's a lot of record keeping that, that, that takes place during that time. Sometimes the budget takes a hit because maybe we, we estimated in the budget in August and September that we were gonna have more kids riding the bus than actually did ride the bus or, or transportation. Those numbers fluctuate. And then there's another change about May, middle of May, is when they actually start figuring in the special education numbers. So, so in all actuality, we're gonna be closer to that flat seven million whenever it comes time to actually close out the books in June. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? And then, the supplemental general fund, the oh-eight account, LOB, that also adjusts based on the general fund. So, so those, those numbers are tied pretty closely to one another. As we scroll down, the one million that's still left in, in federal funds, the majority of that is still tied to ESAR money. The at-risk funding, the general fund gets the at-risk funding, and then we take at-risk funding and transfer it into the at-risk account. So in all actuality, those, those numbers, those, those are kind of duplicate numbers. We carried over approximately five hundred thousand in the, in the at-risk funds, and then, as you can see, we're gonna be, we're gonna be adding about nine hundred thousand from the general fund and the supplemental general fund as mandatory transfers. So that's why that amount is in there. As we talked through different meetings that we've had, that, that fund is actually being used a lot for salaries, as is our supplemental general fund. So those two are, are big in that. We have budgeted a one point five six million dollar expenditures in capital outlay. We always budget all of capital outlay because if we were to spend capital outlay down due to an emergency, and we had only a set aside, or we had only budgeted for what we thought we were gonna spend instead of what could have happened, we would have to republish to be able to get at that money. So, a, a lot of using these funds or using this money is budget authority. It's not necessarily what we're going to spend, but it's what we have the authority to spend. So, for example, in the general fund, if our general fund ends up being just a flat million dollars, we have already, we have already been given the budget authority to spend seven point two. If, if we were to actually have the audit say, oh, we got more kids, or, oh, we, we transported more kids, so we ended up having more. So, so it's a, it's, it's a budget authority issue. Driver training, we continue to go up in that because, because we do, we get grant money for that. We, I mean, we are paying out a fair rate for that, but, but we do accumulate because of some, some grant money that we do get in that. Food service is running about flat, just a little bit over. I did estimate about a seventy thousand transfer from the general fund into food service, not to mean that we need to use that, but it is budgeted for already to give us a little more, more budget authority on food service in the event that we need it. Personal development, professional development, wanting to, to increase that just a little bit. So we've got some transfers scheduled in there. Special education, we, we did increase about three percent in our, our, what we actually pay to, right then, but we had an increase in what we expected received from the state for special education funds. You'll notice that in career, post-secondary education, we did end up with a, with an increase in there. A lot of that is, a lot of that is a, an error. We received some funds from the state that we shouldn't have received, so I budgeted those back into this year's budget to pay them out so that, you know, so that we don't end up, you know, having to take that out of general funds. So that's, that's where, that's why that has increased as much as it has. Gifts and grants, this includes, this includes the, the preschool monies. So there's, there's a lot of different things that, that go into the gifts and grants funds, but it's relatively, relatively stable. Capers is flow in and out, that's money that simply comes in, hits our account for about two seconds, and then goes out. You'll notice that we don't, we don't have as much budgeted as what we actually spent in bonds and interest. We have a surplus in bond and interest, and so that's, that's where that excess money comes from. So we actually have funds to, to carry that, and, and we don't have to necessarily look at the budget authority on that. So we, we have definitely enough budget authority here to pay for our, our bond and interest. So that's, that's not a worry. We actually budget about probably a hundred thousand more than what our actual payments are over the year. So, there was a little bit of a bump in our bond and interest mill levy, and the reason for that is the state felt like that our, our excess funds in, in bond and interest was, was getting a little low. So we just bumped that just a little bit. But if those of you that are on the board for, for an extended period of time, you might remember that, that we actually used to fluctuate somewhere between five and ninety percent, so that would be one of the last years. And we're trying to get that leveled out, where we're at, where we're at about six, six point seven mils in the bond and interest. I've tried to keep you all apprised to some happenings, just the idea of some of our, you'll notice some differences between the actual mill, or the actual assessed valuation in twenty-two, twenty-three, the actual assessed valuation in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the actual, or the estimated assessed valuation for twenty-four, twenty-five. You'll see some differences there, and that contributed to just some, some questions the state had. We have that all worked out, it has worked out to our benefit, and we felt like that that will level out over the next year. You know, final note, these are estimated assessed valuations, we get the actual assessed valuations in November. So if you're interested in what the actual assessed valuations are, I can report that back in November. And then we have seen a decrease in our collections rate. When I first started, we were right at ninety-three percent on, on a, a taxes collected. We're right around eighty percent right now. So that means we'll see some of those funds come in, in, in delinquent taxes over the next year.
On that career in post-secondary education, you said that was higher because we've received more?
Yeah.
You said from the state, so now you're having to, or we're having to pay that back?
So, there, there was a report that was filled out incorrectly on my part, and we received some funds that we didn't necessarily need to get.
Okay.
And so, so the state advised me to set that aside in the, in there, and then whenever we do the audit is when we'll pay that money back.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's just sitting there, ready, we're ready for that to, to be paid back.
Okay.
So, yeah, and, and I mean, it's, it's a report we fill out once a year. We've, we've expressed some need for some professional development and training on my part, and some of the other superintendents have expressed that as well, so we can avoid that from happening in the future.
Any other questions? Jess, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I move to approve the fiscal year budget twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Been moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Okay, and then needs assessment?
So the needs assessment, I did go ahead and fill out the needs assessment. This, this document is for each of the buildings individually, but the very beginning of it is, is for the district as a whole. The, you know, the main, the main areas of emphasis that we, that, that we have talked about through our KISA work and through different meetings that we've had is the difficulty in scheduling and finding more time for professional teacher and staff collaboration to improve student learning. That's a, that's a constant conversation, whether it's negotiations, or calendar committee, or KISA. Those are just, it's a difficult thing to, to be able to fit into, into the school year. High percentage and, and number of free and reduced students, and increased poverty rate. You know, we, we don't, we don't have the mindset that those are our poor performing students. We just know that, that, that does bring challenges to, to education. So, that's one of the areas throughout, or, uh, not necessarily identifying as at-risk students, using free or reduced lunch cal- calculations, excuse me. The number of students are at high risk for fa- falling behind. So we do see that there are students that aren't necessarily classified as free and reduced, but are still at risk for falling behind, and, and we want to address those students. High levels or an increase in absenteeism among the student population. We had a discussion at our KISA meeting last week, you know, that, that we talked about, you know, how we want to address some of the absenteeism. An increased level of social emotional challenges, needs for students, and, and I would say that that is what, what schools are seeing across the state. High levels or increased student mobility affects the amount of instructional time we have with highly mobile students and creates instructional issues with students move in or out throughout the school year. You know, years ago, we would see movement in the summer, or maybe at Christmas break. You know, early in my career, we would see movement, you know, at the end of the nine weeks, or Christmas break, or, you know, during a, during a break. Now, it's, it's whenever. You know, it's, I mean, we, we had, we had up to five students show up at our doorstep two weeks before school was out. So the mobility is, is kind of an issue because we, we end up getting those kids, and then we have to kind of track down if or when they were in school, you know, throughout the past year, so that's a, that's a major concern. Some of the things that we're looking at, you know, identifying budget actions that should be taken and addressed, you know, remove some of these barriers, increase funding and time for staff development. I, I believe we've got a good start on that in terms of our professional development we started. We're also providing opportunities to our staff through multiple different means to, to get per, professional development. Maintain, and I think this would be a priority of the boards, maintain that low student pupil ratio, or teacher pupil ratio for greater individualized instruction. And then, C, identifying the amount of the board estimates it will take for each student to achieve grade level proficiency on state assessments. While assessment scores are one measure, our district does not believe that the student assessment score should be the sole measure of student proficiency. Our teachers and our administration do a great job of using multiple assessments throughout the year, whether it's in the classroom or through, through our tiered level support system, you know, to, to be able to measure that student proficiency. And then finally, many of the factors that affect student success, such as trauma, poverty, mental health, and student disabilities are out of the local board's control. So giving a time estimate on things that consistently change or under the control of other agencies is not a realistic practice of the local school board. So we feel like that we are in a constant movement of trying to improve and, and work on improving students each day, so that, I mean, we do wanna, we do wanna see improvement and growth on a, on an annual basis, but, you know, trying to pin that down to a specific time is not necessarily. But, you know, trying to pin that down to a specific time is not necessarily um, something into the board's control. Um, so, um, you know, the other ones address some, a few very similar um, to the district goals. Uh, but also uh, a few specific things for each of the, of the different buildings. So questions on uh, the assessment? Uh, state assessment review?
Any questions? I move to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five needs assessment as presented.
Second.
Then moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you.
Sarah, was that you that? All right, that's all we have for the budget hearing.
That's all there. Yep, we're off to the next.
The budget hearing meeting.
Second.
Then moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. Thank you. And we will move on to the regular meeting. Roll call is the same. Jesse's still with us on phone?
Yep.
Um, I think we have one addition to the agenda. And then we're gonna add that under old business, item C. We're just gonna readdress the rec activities. USD four thirty-one activities at the rec while they're
While we're having activities.
While we're having activities. So that'll come here shortly. So I don't see any visitors, so we don't have any of that. We'll go to ni- number five, the consent agenda. All of you guys had a chance to review that? If not, take a quick minute.
Okay, I will, I will point out one thing on the, on the consent agenda. We're still, we still have the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for, for year open. So until we close that, it doesn't bring over the, that's why I was so late in putting the cash balance report up. It doesn't bring over the beginning balances for, for, it's not a major issue for the general fund. Um, you can see that we have six hundred and twenty-seven thousand in the general fund. But for capital outlay, for driver's ed, for food service, for professional development, all of those have, have balances that we carry over. And on this, until we close out that, that fund or, or that year, then it doesn't bring those balances over. So we're not, we're not negative in any of those. It's just that we haven't brought those numbers forward to this year.
We're just I think you're on the consent agenda.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we need to approve the agenda. Yeah. Good job.
Sorry, thank you.
I'm going to adopt the agenda as modified, yes.
There we go. Sarah?
Okay, then moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. No, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Um, when will that, when will they get closed out or when will the year get closed out?
We're gonna go ahead and do that, and I'm gonna have uh, an updated cash balance report this week. And then we'll reopen that because we're, we're getting ready to have the auditors come in. Is it mid-October?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah. So we're gonna, we're gonna close it and then, then we'll reopen it. But I'll, I'll have a, I'll have a updated one of these for you um, this week.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Then moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. Hit me if I close it. All right, we'll move on to item six, old business. A approval of additional out-of-district students.
So on the, on the page that is there, I, I tried to break it out um, by the timeframes and keep it uh, as organized. You'll notice that after our um August board meeting, uh, we did have uh, four additional students uh, apply. Uh, this went through the same application process, uh, then went to the, uh, went to the administration. Uh, they double-checked and, and looked into these students and then, and then they chose to approve. So now it comes to you guys as final approval.
Hey, Patrick, does that still cover the allotted numbers that we originally decided or is this increasing that?
So, so all of these are still pretty well within those allotted numbers. The, the difference is that um the, the anticipated allotted numbers is only within that timeframe that we have to, that we have to abide by that, only within that timeframe of up until June fifteenth deadline. Um, so, so we, we do have the option to exceed those numbers since we were outside of that um timeframe that was allotted by state law. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Okay, so, so be- because the statute was so limiting in, in the timeframes and, and all of the, all of the things that they were trying to put into place, um, we only have to abide by those dates up until those dates go out. So after June fifteenth, now we revert back to our old acceptance policy uh, of non, of, of out-of-district students.
Okay.
Is that, is that a better explanation or is that confuse it more?
No, I mean, it's a good explanation. I guess I, I guess my thought is, is if, if we can increase that after that date, then why do they even put that date in place?
That, that's, that's the ten million dollar question. But then, but then also remember that we, we will reevaluate those numbers um, next spring as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at those numbers again in April to then publish for May. Um, and even the great thing is that the window opens up from January one till June fifteenth. So, so yeah.
That makes sense.
Any other questions? I move to accept the additional non-resident students to USD four thirty-one as presented.
Second.
Then moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, item B, approval of additional signatures for the activities account.
So I believe last month, uh, we discussed this and we, we did approve going ahead and moving the, the cutting of checks for officials to the high school. Um, as we went to the bank to add um, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Mason and, and Ms. Kinman to the signature card. They need an official uh, motion to be able to add those people to the uh, signature card.
I'm going to approve the addition of signatures of Aaron Kraft, Joel Mason and Kelly Kinman to the signature card of the USD four thirty-one activities, activities account at Wilson State Bank.
Second.
Then moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, then the additional item that we added would be C.
Use of the using the rec.
During our activities.
Yes. Yeah, so back in February, uh, when we had our joint meeting, it was brought to, it was brought to us to um, for you to approve using the fitness center, excuse me, during um, our activities um, through COVID and I believe a little bit before that. Um, and then since then, um no, no rec activities were going on during any of our home activities. So, so you know, graciously you went ahead and did that with some assumptions that we would have staffing by the rec uh, to be able to do that. Um, so we've had, we, we have had one event. Um, and so I'll just run through, Mr. Kraft uh, sent me this and he also had a conversation with Ms. Ki- Mr. Kinman um, concerning this issue. Um, so um, our gate workers, because they only had one person on staff for the rec, our gate workers had to take care of the sign-in book um, to, to four people coming in. Um, the, the agreement was that only the fitness center was, was to be used. We ended up having um, walkers. Uh, those walkers did um, hit um, some of the other schools' cameras on multiple occasions. We also had um, uh, people come in um using their own keys instead of checking in through, and they had uh, classes in the aerobics room, which we weren't aware that, that that was going to take place. We had to um, we had to shut the side door because we, we had multiple people coming in, uh, one of those side doors uh, because they had their own key uh, to be able to get in during that. Um, we had um, and then we um, we also had to shoo out some kids from the, um, from the fitness center. Sorry, I've gotta fly. Uh, so Miss, uh, so Chris Kinman also talked to his staff. Um, they, um, you know, of all of the staff, he talked to three staff members that would have worked during that time if they were to pick up those shifts. And they said they preferred that it be closed. Um, one doesn't really work weekdays, so it doesn't affect them. Uh, one of them said too many scenarios to try to manage when open during s- uh, school athletic activities. Um, the policy would change due to abuse and I feel we should remember that and not repeat the history. So um, so the recommendations from Mr. Kraft, um, Mr. Kinman, his workers and then myself would be to go ahead and close uh, the fitness center and not have rec activities during our home activities.
Sounds like it's a bigger issue than just the fitness center. I mean,
Right, right.
That's not even
Yeah, yeah.
Involved in, you know, discussion of what we
And that, and that was my conversation after it was kind of, you know, it's kind of brought up, especially after the, the change in the age. Um, that was a concern. Um, but when I talked to Chris, he was like, it's just the fitness center. Well then, then all of a sudden it became more. So, um, so I, I think, I think people had, had adjusted to us not having the rec available during activities. And I mean, you know, the signs are posted and, and people have done a really, really good job with that with, you know, with, with the exception of one or two. And, you know, I, I think, I think we counted up, what, thirty activities? You know, in, in the entire year. Um, so thirty, thirty instances where they wouldn't be able to use the, the fitness center during, during a three hundred and sixty, sixty-five day period.
I do know some people who walk that are in the facility to watch the activity.
Yeah.
You know, in between, so
Right.
They
And those, and those would not be the people that hit the camera on multiple, the same camera on multiple occasions. So those, no, no, you're right. We do have people that
And I just hope, you know, people aren't just focused
Yeah.
On that, you know, because there are people who
No, they
Walk during
You're exactly right. There were multiple, multiple things and that was a relatively small event. Um, you know, when it comes to wrestling, um, Winter Jam, some of our larger, much larger events. Um, you know, if we play Pratt, Pratt travels well. Some of our larger events, it, it could be, it could become more of an issue.
Do we need to be concerned with the issue of keys to the building?
We're gonna address that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, Tyler and I have already um, started working on a plan for that. And we're, we're not gonna do it punitive. I don't, I don't want to invent a mistake that. Um, you know, we, we wanna, you know, we want to, that is, that building is wide open. It's twenty years old and a lot of people have keys. Uh, we dealt with that at Spurville um, on multiple occasions with multiple gyms. And so we're not, we're not gonna be punitive about it. We're not trying to punish anybody. Um, but we do want to, uh, we do wanna work towards um, you know, making that building more secure. So I would, um, I would suggest an, an entertaining of a motion to um to go back to the original policy, something to the effect of um, you know, that, that rec, the rec would be closed. Um, all rec facilities will be closed during USD four thirty-one activities, if that is, is what you so choose to do.
I'll, I'll make the motion to uh close all rec facilities during USD four thirty-one activities events. As before.
Okay.
Do I get a second?
All second.
Then moved in second at all in favor?
Yes.
Fails. All right, so
Two, two four or one four?
Two, two.
Okay.
So it will remain as it is. Okay, move on to item seven, new business. A solar energy exploration.
So I just wanted you to be aware, um, I'm, I'm starting the process of talking with a company by the name of GRP Wagman. Um, they have worked with Greenbush over the last um, twelve months. Greenbush, remember, is a service center that, that we, we use for, for, for professional development. But we also are exploring um, other things like um, cooperative purchasing agreements um, for, for items like we talked about administratively earlier today uh, about purchasing paper at a reduced rate, um, because we can, we can do it in a more bulk through Greenbush. So Greenbush goes out and creates opportunities for the um, uh, for districts to be able to work with other companies and they, they create the opportunities and models that benefit the school districts. So um, GRP Wagman um, comes out and does a detailed analysis of the um, of the the district, our electrical rates, um, and whether or not that this would be beneficial to the district to even explore. Um, after they do that, they then start the process of coming and communicating with the board in a more detailed um, way because it'll be our individual numbers, let alone um, you know, just general numbers that they're able to use for their, um, for their overall um, models. So it'd be specific and tailored to our district. And then, um, and then they would uh, work through us, work with us through the process of installation. Um, no money comes out of the district until they flip the switch and the solar um, Um, no money comes out of the district until they flip the switch and the solar, um, array becomes active. Um, that is one of the, that was one of the things that Green Bush emphasized, they, they wanna take the risk off of the district. Um, so I am beginning that process of looking primarily, their model right now is to put arrays on, on roofs. One of the benefits is that we need to replace Roosevelt's roof. If we look at partnering with, um. GRP Wagman on a solar array on Roosevelt, now the roof becomes the platform. Which then it gets built into the whole system. And then we would be able to take advantage of some grant, uh, federal grant monies to be able to, um, replace the roof on Roosevelt. Put a solar array, help us with electrical costs and, um, and then have money to be able to use on some other, uh, capital projects as well. Questions?
So we don't have to pay for the assessment or anything?
Nope.
Okay. And you don't need a motion?
I don't need a motion unless somebody is just adamantly opposed. And, you know, I'll just continue to, to update you as I, as I find out more information.
Move on to item B, policy updates, GAOE workers compensation. This will be the first read.
So this is a policy that came out individually from KSB. Um, reading through this, this is not a major thing. Um, it is, it is, um, it does give us some, um. Pretty individual, uh, things for us to work on in terms of making sure that our employees know that we do have workers compensation. And then also it, it specifically tailors the days. From the accident or injury that it does need to be, um, uh, reported. And, um, and then it also works on, uh, it also specifies. Um, like after a employee has left, um, the district. How mu- how long they have to be able to say, oh, I was hurt at this point in time, so. So it just clarifies, um, a lot of the information in terms of workers' compensation. Uh, we do our workers' compensation through KSB or actually KBS and their group and so they. They, um, highly suggest that we approve this. This would be a first reading and then, um, then we'll approve it at the October meeting.
Any questions? Move on to item C, acceptance of a donation.
So we've had, we've had two, uh, entities reach out to us and specify donations. Uh, one is, um. Uh, Dakota Myers and Myers Advertising as well as Barts Construction.
When did Barts donate?
Um, we received their donation, um, I think it was last Thursday.
Okay.
Came in the mail.
Okay. Was their donation specified for anything?
For a volleyball.
And the Myers one was for football?
For football, yes.
Um, I don't know if it's normal practice, but I know you said the check from Dakota Myers, I think you said had already been deposited. How does that work if we're just now?
And we, we, we won't do that and we won't do that.
Okay.
Like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right. And I, I, I mentioned this on Friday. Um, cause I did call KSB and they indicated that we should have a policy in terms of. Um, like general guidelines as to acceptance of donations and I have not found that yet. So I will reach out to them and specifically find something, um, to give us more guidelines on that as well.
Are these just to be used at the coaches' discretion or?
Yes. Well, they, they have, I mean, the, the. The donators have sp- been specifically talking to the coaches about the donations.
Keeps passing between rows. Well, I'll move to accept the donation of funds from Dakota Myers and Barts Construction. Um, to be used as specified, but I think moving forward, we need to make sure we have a policy in place. I'll second that. It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. Okay. Move on to item D, homeschool participation policy, first read.
So this is, um. The. This is a result of, um. This is a result of some of the new legislation that has come down that. Um, homeschool students that reside within our district. Have the opportunity to participate in our Acacia sponsored activities. And so we have, we have had a request. Um, we thought we were gonna have two requests. We've, we've since received just one request. Um. Mr. Kraft found, um, this, um, policy from a, another school that had already put this in place. I modified it. Um, it does, it does go into some detail. It also does address some of our school activities that actually are classes. Such as, um, band, vocal, forensics and debate. Um, those are specified as actual specific classes, so if that student were to choose to. Um, participate in those activities. They would need to actually enroll and be our student for at least that activity. Um, it also does lay out the, um, the. The, the paperwork and the guidelines, um, that do need to be, um, you know, taken care of. Um, parents are to submit weekly and bi-weekly grade checks, um, to their respective school to maintain eligibility. Um, you know, all, all of the proper paperwork, um, for the district does need to be filled out. Um, you know, if, if it is a contact, um, athletics, you know, concussion forms and, and. Um, physicals do need to be, um. You know, accomplished, you know, just like it was one of our students, so. Um, so these are, you know, this is, this is a policy that has been in practice in another district. Uh, for a year now and, um, you know, we would recommend that, you know, you read through this, if there are, if there are some specifics. Uh, Mr. Kraft and Mr. Um, Flowers have already looked over this. We've, we've found a few things. That we've corrected in terms of what we have for activities and athletics, um, but if there are other, other things. Um, and then we would recommend that we would actually add this to both the middle school and the high school activities handbook, which would be, um. You know, just an extension of your policies instead of actually putting it into our policy handbook. Does that make sense? What a difference in the two?
So if the kid wanted to do debate, they would just come, maybe enroll and just go to the class, have one class?
Correct. Yep.
Thanks, Ken.
So at this time, it's just a, it's just a first read and then we'll, um. Then we'll approve it at the next board meeting. Unless you feel like you've not got enough information, but I would suggest reading over this a couple of times.
Did you just add anywhere where it mentions four thirty-one? Cause you said you made some.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I changed there. I mean, we, we had to, we had to specify. A couple of activities that we had that they didn't have and, and a few of those types of things. The, um. Most, most of the, um, the guidelines that they have to follow, um. Were our, our Acacia specifications, not, not necessarily even the, the other school specifications.
We'll move on to item eight, reports. So Superintendent report.
Okay, I told Becca to keep it short, so nudge me.
Okay.
Okay, um, just a reminder, KSB convention is coming up on November fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. Um, if you would like to attend, uh, one or all days, uh, I'd be more than happy to get you registered and, and hotel rooms scheduled. Uh, Jessica is already, Jessica and myself are already registered and, um, as of now, she will be designated as our, um. Um, uh, voting member. Um, congratulations, Jessica. Um, so, um, so that'll take place on the sixteenth. Um, the sixteenth is the main day, uh, of, of items that, that would be of interest, so if you're interested, just let me know. Um, you know, we've had some, uh, questions about the high school shower, uh, this week mats are, are going down in that. Um, there are no concerns, uh, for the safety of, of our students in that shower. Uh, I know that has been, um, brought up from time to time. Um, it, it is not pretty. I, I'll, I'll be honest with you in, in compared to, uh, the past, it is not pretty in there. Um, but it actually is more. Safe because we don't have paint flaking off the walls, um, like we have the past five years. Um, so we do have Barts Construction, um, scheduled to come in the twenty-seventh to put a, um, a water resistant paint on the walls. And, um, and, you know, bring that back to, uh, a presentable. Um. Visually presentable. October fourth, um, is when we tentatively have scheduled for the, um, dedication. Of the press box to Dr. Blake Harris and his family in trends. Uh, they, that is the date that, that Joel has worked out with the family. Uh, for that dedication and that will take place prior to the ballgame approximately six thirty, right? So, I encourage you to be, um, uh, and we'll communicate how, how you as the board will participate in that. Um, just a heads up, uh, Barts, Barts Construction, I have worked, um, are working on, uh, estimates for a weight room. Um, you know, refer to Friday notes for, um, for reasons for that. Um, and that looks like that estimate would be right around around four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, for, uh, for moving that weight room and, and, um, we're still looking at some. How it would best fit at the high school, um, so we're still exploring that. Uh, daycare, uh, October one is a tentative, um, break ground date. Uh, I will express to you, uh, it has been expressed in, in our meetings that. Um, through the legislative session, there was some funding that they were expecting to get through grants through the state of Kansas. That were removed from some of the final, um, budgeting, um, legislation that took place. Um, so there is some, some look at decreasing the size to about thirty-eight. Instead of the anticipated fifty-nine, uh, but through our discussions as well, uh, we're gonna be working. Uh, I'm working with, uh, Great Bend Economic Development to develop some surveys and look at. A truer, uh, picture of the need for daycare in, in Hoysington, so. Um, so that's, that's a fluid, um, that's a fluid movement right now in terms of, of the daycare. We're, we're a hundred percent positive there will be something here. Uh, numbers may look a little bit different than, uh, we had anticipated in the past. Uh, I wanted to give you an update on Labor Day activities that took place in district facilities. I personally did not attend. Uh, many of those, but from talking with different people that were, um, they. The activities that took place within the activity center, um, on Saturday, uh, were well attended. Um, things were picked up. The participants worked well with our staff. Uh, to make sure that the facility was, was, uh, well maintained and cleaned up afterwards. And then I think there was some pretty good attendance of the tractor pull, um, out at the activity center on Monday after the parade, so. Uh, so we had positive, uh, experiences with that as well. Um, our surplus items right now are on gravelroads.com. Uh, this is a, this is a new, um, online auction site. Carrie was able to help me track that down. Um, Purple Wave has moved out of the small, um, online auctions and only do larger items now. And so gravel roads were, were, they were more than happy to come and take pictures and. Put our things into, into, um, lots and, and get that, so if you're interested, um, you know, I think you can still get a bus pretty inexpensively. And, um, um, but we've got all kinds of Chromebooks and desks and tables, um, that you could sit on as well. Um, then, um, you know, towards the beginning of the school year. Uh, so we seem to have had some issues with our HVAC at the beginning of the school year and these issues have been worked out. Um, between, uh, Tyler and our gentleman that comes out and helps us from P one on our, um, maintenance agreement. Um, you know, almost, almost everything has been corrected. We still do have a few, uh, minor issues. Um, primarily at the high school, um, on a couple of rooms, but also. Um, you know, just a few things, um, the high school office because of the, um. Because of the, the water, the way the water valve works, we're, we've gotta replace that valve. And, uh, so we're, we're pretty aware of most everything that is an issue, but, um. We understand that there was a day at the middle school that it was pretty warm. Uh, that was unforeseen and a, and kind of a, a glitch thing that took place and, and we were able to get it corrected within a day, so. Questions or concerns or comments?
Don't think so. Move on to B, legislative report.
And I do not have anything, um, at this time.
Okay. I didn't see any board member reports. Did I even sign? Okay. Move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. You want to go into executive session? I probably should for.
Um, so I had. Had one addition, additional nomination. It's, it's on our notes as well. And it's, it's in there. I mean, if there's no questions, we, I mean, we, but I, I could see because I.
Still look at the nominations.
The, the final nomination, we might wanna go. The, the final nomination, we might want to go into executive session, just, uh, just to answer questions about that.
So anything with five minutes?
Five minutes, five minutes.
I know we go into executive session for five minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under K O M A exception for the purpose of discussing nominations with Mr. Curtis present. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, let me just say eight o'clock. It's okay. It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
Passes six zero. All right, I'm gonna grab you so I don't forget you.
I'm forgetting, thank you.
You're welcome.